Regardless.
We'll get out of.
All right. The liberty to choose the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a motion to accept the agenda of the.
Go vote. Second.
Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye. Bull's aye. And the minutes.
Sheriff Tippet.
Wow. Move to approve the minutes was correction.
Okay. I'll second. All right, call for a vote on that.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye. Bull's aye. Barb, we're gonna jump right on.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
It's fine.
I've got sick family. I'd like to set a land use hearing for Dennis and Rachel Hearn for Tuesday, November 18th at 9:15.
Okay. I would make the motion to set the land hearing for Dennis and Rachel Hearn. November.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth at 9:15.
I'll second. Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye. Bull's aye. I'll go right to the next one, Barb.
I would like to set a land use hearing for Jay Castle for Tuesday, November 18th at 9:30.
I would also make a motion to set the land use hearing for Jay Castle on November 18th at 9:30.
Second. Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye. Bull's aye. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Uh, quarterly report for the recorder.
I would move to accept the quarterly report from the recorder.
I'll second that. Okay. Call for a vote on that one.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye. Bull's aye. All in nicely.
You're getting trained, aren't you?
Okay, 9:05. John Burr.
Do you have all these invoices in your folder?
Yes, I did. I did see that.
I have brought copies of the estimates of turnout gear for everyone, if you would like one.
I think, is that what was emailed to John? I provided it to him.
Yes, it was.
Yep.
You did?
Yep, so they got copies.
Yes, yes. Anyway, I'm here on behalf of the Garrison Fireman and I am president of the Fire Protection Agency Board. And so we are responsible for the safety and the both comfort safety of our firemen, which is number one priorities for us. Now, we got a shocker in this estimate and stuff. It's a signed estimate, so this will be coming. They would not give us a signed receipt because if things change, they can change this, but they could not change a signed document for exact dollars. But it's a shocker. So I guess what I'm requesting is what help the board supervisors can give for personal safety gear that affects every one of our firemen. I've got three members of my family that is part of the firemen. And everybody works hard to be conservative. And still the dollars that, the turnout gear. Turnout gear is now 13 years old. State requires us to change at 10 years because of the safety of the people involved. So anyway, that's why I'm here to collect and beg money. So put it in your understanding and your conversations and thank you for your time. Any questions?
For that resolution, I put the amount of the 10% estimated off of this. So do you know, like, once you get that order, then they'll give you the final invoice?
I do not know, but I know they're starting to make it right now.
Okay. So I don't know if you want to hold off on the resolution just to make sure we have the exact dollar amount as of the fact, because this is just the estimate, like you said? Because in the resolution, I put that amount, what we're gifting? What's your thoughts?
We can give them a verbal.
You can do that, or, I mean, if you think it's gonna be pretty darned close to 9606, I mean, that's what I have in the.
I, I think you can go with that amount, honestly. Because they worked hard, the committee on the turnout gear, with the salesman and different companies, and this one seemed to be the cheapest, believe it or not, and the most reliable for us to get it. That was a big worry of mine.
Because once you pay for it, then you pay the fire department back.
So you don't want to wait? You want to take it now?
Sure.
Good.
You take it now, or whatever works in your.
We just won't reimburse them until I get their official.
Final, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would make the motion to approve Resolution 2581 for Garrison Fire. That money would be 10% match from the lost funds. The total purchase for the bunker gear is $96,066.15, and the lost funds would contribute a 10% match.
I'll second. Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye. Bull's aye.
Thank you very much. It is appreciated.
Who else do you number 11 handle?
Good.
Point and replace members of Benton County Opioid Task Force. What can you tell me about that?
So we've been meeting quite regularly lately, so we've invited a few others to start attending our meetings. But with them not being officially appointed, they can't, like, take action or make motions. So we're asking that you appoint a few people. But I gotta get Stephanie's last name real quick. So we had.
Bosenberg.
What is it?
Stephanie Bosenberg.
Okay, I'm like, I had to look up her name. So with Chelsea Levin, she was our secretary of our opioid task force. I would need to replace her with Stephanie Bosenberg. Dan LaGrange.
She's my other half.
Yeah. So Dan LaGrange, the pharmacy. Katie Cox with Virginia Gay Hospital. Shelby Chekel, our sheriff's office liaison, and Josh Karsten. So I'm asking that you would appoint those to the opioid task force.
All in?
Yes.
Who, do we know who else is on it currently?
Yes, I can tell you, we have myself, James Bischke, the superintendent of Benton Community, Ray, Dr. Meker, Jean Olin, Grace Schmidt, Hope McKelf, Cindy Patie with Bell Plain Ambulance. So we have a wide variety of departments to use. Now that we're getting moving along with some of our projects, and I know they all attended last week too, so. Am I forgetting somebody? Because I don't think somebody else.
You got all those names?
Sure. I could, because I didn't write it down.
I'll just, yeah, it's the best amount.
I would, I would make the motion to approve the names for the opioid task force. People that want on the board.
Okay, I'll second that. You already get them off, huh?
Yep, Dan LaGrange, Stephanie Bosenberg, Katie Cox, Shelby Chekel, and Josh Karsten. In addition to all those others, so.
Yes, right. I have a call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye. Bull's aye. Done.
Thank you. I don't know if you want to get Ben's weed report. I didn't put a time on it on the news.
You moved?
Ben, or not Ben.
We have a time, I have a time that we.
How long does yours take?
Whatever, your call.
It might take a little bit longer.
It shouldn't take too long.
Okay, cool.
Do you guys have copies of this report?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have two different things here. The first one, just the annual weed report, something we have to do every year. Kind of lists some of the weeds that they want to see if you're seeing out there. There's a lot that really aren't a problem. You know, thistles were pretty bad this year, but they were bad everywhere. Did a pretty good job of getting ahead of them, I thought, before they went to seed for the most part. The only thing of note really was I did see some teasel in the south part of the county, and then I also saw some leafy spurge as well. So those are two of the weeds that were required to control. Just kind of goes through kind of what we do for chemicals. How many, how many people reported weeds that I had to go look at? There were, there were four of those. Two of them took care of themselves, the other two also eventually took care of them, but I was in contact with them, so I didn't have to do any destructions this year, which was nice. I did get word yesterday, our spray truck is on its way back to us. So once that gets here, we'll get going with the next one that I have a grant for. But that, that was pretty exciting to hear. There really nothing else too crazy there. I kind of listed the chemicals that we use as well, but other than that, nothing, nothing too crazy on that part. She has some questions for me.
You gonna keep the new spray truck in your shed here?
Over at secondary. We have a spot for it. Uh, secondary road, sorry. Yeah.
Where are you gonna keep the two stalls here?
We have our half ton and one ton. And then we park our skid in there or ranger, depending on what time of year it is.
We'll talk later. No big deal.
Well, yeah, we, we keep it over at secondary because that has the chemical containment system there if there was ever a spill. And we don't have that at our shop there by the fire station.
Right.
And then I have the recertification too for the 2026 weed commissioner. On the back part of that too. It's all together. That was the second part.
So I will take a motion to accept the weed department's. Annual report.
I would make the motion to accept the weed department's annual report.
I'll second that. Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye. Bull's aye.
Good. Did you get the, this one too?
All right. You did a good job this year.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I come from an era when I stuck all the weeds in the ditches with a sweep.
Yeah.
Every time I had nothing to do dead, send me out to the ditches.
That would take a long time to get.
It does.
Five thousand miles.
Well, yes, but we only had like five or six miles in the ditches.
Good, glad to hear that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Cassandra.
I have a few things for you all to look at. Um, I do have one of our annual reports too. They're hot off the presses, so I only have one, so I'll give it to you when we leave. But I'm Cassandra. I'm the deputy director at ASAC. So we have been here in Vinton for a number of years. Some of you may also remember when we were in Bell Plain, pre-COVID. And I was actually telling Meredith, I live in Urbana, so I was like, this is a much faster commute for me than Cedar Rapids. So it's nice to meet all of you in this context too. So we are asking to join the service hub here in lieu of our separate location in Vinton. So we have really put a lot of effort into Benton County here over the last year. Some of it with the support of the opioid funds. We really feel like it's important to focus on rural counties. I know some of the more populated areas, you know, a lot of times get a good amount of attention, but we think it's just as important to invest in our rural counties. We serve seven counties in Iowa, ASAC does. And so the biggest thing for us is we want individuals in Benton County to have the easiest access to what they need, including substance use services. So having an office here would allow individuals to hopefully make one trip to where they need, if it's probation and us, if it's, you know, to get help with food, and then us just allowing individuals to have to worry about getting to one place and having their needs met. We work a lot with the Abbey Center and a lot of our locations. So that would also allow us easier access to make referrals and have patients, again, be able to come to one place rather than, you know, driving to several locations. The other piece is we are, we've been talking with Steve Beck quite a bit in Bell Plain, looking for an office space in Bell Plain so that individuals that live in, in that town have better access to treatment as well. And moving here would assist us with that, just so we can help more people in their own communities. We also have access to transportation assistance. So it would be nice for individuals to be able to come here and, you know, have access to transportation assistance and also be able to, you know, go to other appointments that they may have here. I know Meredith has done a really good job, you know, just making connections and helping individuals right here in Benton County. She works a lot with Shelby, a lot with Brody. We had an opportunity to visit with Brody here recently about telehealth services, and he didn't know that telehealth treatment is an option for individuals who have a big barrier in, you know, frequently going places. So we were able to, you know, share that information with him and just really try to identify how can we help people in this county, make things easier for them. I don't know how much you're aware of the behavioral health realignment that has taken place in the entire state of Iowa, but it did impact resources of organizations trying to help people. And one of the things that we've been hearing a lot is rural counties are likely going to be the first place that people pull out of in person just because of the financial impact. Our goal is to actually put more effort into our rural counties because I think this is when people are going to need it the most, is when it's less accessible in their communities. So hoping to just help people where they are and better meet their needs. So we offer prevention services. So we're in Vinton Schelsberg Schools. I know we're working on getting into Benton community schools. Bell Plain, we're also in conversation with for specific programming there. And for treatment services, we offer the whole gamut right here in Vinton. Intensive outpatient, regular outpatient. So people don't have to go elsewhere. They don't have to go to Cedar Rapids. They don't have to travel to get what they need. We can help them here rather than placing an additional burden of commuting. So our hope in hopefully coming here is just to serve people in Benton County better. So I was just telling Meredith, I didn't put it on here because we just got the numbers yesterday, but in 2024, we served, I believe it was 84 individuals in Benton County. Already this year, we've served 87. And those are what I would say are patients that are enrolled in services. Those don't even capture the individuals that Meredith is working with just to provide support and outreach. They don't have to be an enrolled patient with us to get services, you know, helping navigate resources, what is available to just meet their social determinants of health if they're having difficulty with housing, if they're having difficulty with, you know, assistance with food insecurity. We'll help. You don't have to be a patient, and so that's what our care navigators do. And we have one here in Benton County, and it was Meredith, and she did such a good job that she's now the manager of care navigation. But we are going to hire a full-time care navigator because we think the, the work is just that important, especially in this community.
That was with our opioids.
Yeah.
With the care navigator. Other counties do that one too?
Will you do that with them?
We're the only county that did it.
What do you want to ask?
Um, Jones County did it for us.
Well, their wishes was they want two small offices. Similar to the hub. I haven't sat down and pushed a pencil what's that looking to cost, but I could throw a ballpark figure, probably 1,500, 2,000 bucks for them two small rooms. Just to get them in.
Talking.
You would do it similar to what you, we had looked at, same thing?
What the hub looks like. They like that.
Okay.
They said they could even roll them a bit smaller, but.
And it doesn't have to have a window in between.
Although we kind of liked your decoration ideas.
This would definitely fill out the one-stop shop for somebody looking for assistance with whatever sort of help they may need. Because I know we had looked, ASAC had looked at this a number of years ago. But at the time, they just couldn't make it fly.
I will tell you in the last, it's been almost three years now, we have had to change in executive leadership. And our new executive director, Stephanie Bosenberg, she's worked for ASAC for 33 years. Her heart and soul is ASAC, and she should have been in her role years before. And so we've had a lot of really positive things happen under her leadership. And so we were excited that this might be a possibility now because we did not have a say in the decision before, so.
So if we spend money to remodel that, are you going to ask for reimbursement from ASAC? Just a question.
I guess what it comes down to, I got another idea for that building for office space we might use for county reasons. But I don't know yet. I haven't pushed, asked any more questions. I'm afraid I'll know more in a month or so. They would have more priority than you since it's county stuff. And if it doesn't work out, then you guys would have a second chance, of course, at it. And then during the winter months, then that would give me time to get done what you guys want done. But that's kind of where I'm at right now. These two guys go home, anything about this other deal with the county, I haven't discussed it. This is news to them, and I just laid it on them now, so.
What about the other health office space? Have they looked at that? Over here, on the other side of Courtney?
They want, well, she's already in there right now.
No, I'm on this side of Courtney. She's talking about the little one that's shared with Courtney.
See, we discussed that when we met here a month ago. They want two small offices and a big meeting conference room.
So we currently have a counselor and a care navigator, and then we need group space.
Explain to them what you kind of need on these rooms.
Sure, sure.
I know, they don't know this at all. News to them.
Sure.
Explain what you need for these office.
Yep. So currently, we have a care navigator and a counselor, both located here in Vinton. So the care navigator, you know, does what Meredith in terms of, you know, helping people meet their needs, so all of the extras. We don't just have people come in for their session and say, "Good luck." We make sure that they have everything they need, you know, transportation, like I kind of talked about, food, housing, all of those extras. So that care navigator needs an office space to meet with people confidentially. The counselor then does individual sessions, and so would need their own office space because sometimes they are both meeting with people at the same time. And then the group space is when we do our group treatment sessions. So we do offer intensive outpatient, so that's nine hours of group a week. And we also offer one-hour groups a lot of times during the evening just to make sure that, you know, more people can come, but have various group times. So then we need a larger group space that can, you know, fit 10 to, you know, 15 people. people. So it's not necessarily that the two offices and the group space need to be in the same space. It would just be to make sure that people are receiving all of the treatment that they need, would need space, you know, to meet individually and in a group.
You're currently leasing a building in Benton?
Mm-hmm.
How long is that?
It's up in June.
June.
Mm-hmm.
You've got some time.
We do, but there's a certain amount of notice.
Right.
That we have to give them, so.
Well, basically says it's a month out from.
Give me a month.
Sure.
Then that would give you seven months then for more notification.
Sure.
So that would be enough?
Yes, I want to say it's six months.
Six months?
I believe so.
So we'd be pushing the edge of it.
Yeah. Yeah.
That way you guys can decide what you want to charge for rent.
Right.
And talk with the assessor because then we'll have to pay taxes.
That goes back on that.
We'll go on the assessor's.
Any questions for?
No, I think.
I'd love to see it here.
Great, we would too.
It depends to have everything here, so.
Yeah.
Eight ASAC one-piece that we've never had in this building that we wanted to get in when we started here, but they were under contract at the time, and it just wasn't going to work.
Yeah. We've had a lot of conversations with Brody about it would be really nice for his individuals to come in and then just walk right across the hall and do their sessions, so.
Thank you.
Please come in. We'll let you know. I'll let Meredith know.
Sounds good, thank you.
Courtney.
Mine's pretty quick. Just have my quarterly reports, and then I have kind of an emergency procedure phone number for when I'm on maternity leave.
So the first one there should be the VA quarterly report. As you can see, I have not had any applications as far as rental assistance or any type of assistance for our veterans, which is good. Hopefully, everybody's receiving everything they need through, you know, benefits with the actual VA. The next one is the general assistance quarterly report. Thankfully, we haven't had a lot. There was three for that quarter, two rental assistance, and one funeral relief. You guys have any questions with those? They're pretty, pretty simple. And then the last paper that I have there is just something I put together, emergency procedures and information. So I'll be taking maternity leave, hopefully mid-December for about six weeks. We'll see, you know, date-wise, of course, you can't predict exactly, but thinking mid-December. So under there, I have Lynn County and Iowa County as far as counties nearby that veterans can go to if they need to put in a claim while I'm gone. American Legion DAV, VFW is another one that they can call if they just have some questions, things of that nature. I'm cross-accredited with all of them, which means any veteran that's worked with me is able to call them and get the same information. Iowa City VA Transportation, we do have our van, so they will just need to contact Iowa City while I'm gone to try and get a ride if they need a ride for anywhere. And then I did add social services for general assistance. Lisa Soder, the last time I knew was who our contact is for kind of social services in our area. It is, okay, I was going to say, I have not met her, but the last email update I got, that's who it was. And then just additional CVSOs. Dustin Peterson with Lynn Counties, my district president Patty Hammond is another good contact, but otherwise, we have Dale Henry for our chairman. So just people of contact, you know, in case anything crazy were to happen for that six-week period that I'm out.
We can post on my website, too.
Yes, I have these posted on my doors. I will have the general assistance and Veterans Affairs applications for rent assistance and things like that out, so they are all still accessible. It would just be information, if they needed information on a claim, had questions on a claim, when they would contact another organization while I'm gone. And that seems to be pretty standard as far as the small counties go. I checked with some other small counties with their procedures and things like that, so.
You're getting covered.
Try to.
That's good.
Any questions or anything?
None.
Well, I don't know. I'd make a motion to accept the quarterly report for Veterans Affairs.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, Courtney.
Absolutely. If you guys need anything, you can always call me or email me.
Do you want to act on the GA one, too?
Oh, yeah. There's always two separate ones.
The general assistance. Sorry.
Do you have another motion to that?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the general assistance quarterly report.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The last one is the military, right?
Yes.
That would be number twelve.
And that's those folders sitting beside you.
There hasn't been any that were recommended.
Congratulations, too.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
So then you'll, you can sit and sign all those when you're done.
No, I'll take it.
Sorry. You got till twelve-thirty, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Number twelve, can I get a motion on that one?
There's a resolution in your packet.
Yeah, I would make motion to approve Resolution twenty-five eighty-two, to approve the homestead tax credits and exemptions on the military tax credits and disabled veterans' homestead tax credits for twenty-twenty-five assessment.
Second. Okay. I'll read both by name.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bowles, aye.
So those are the credits that are going to be going into this next valuation report, twenty-five.
Right there, everyone's going to be signing.
I think it's just the chairman, though. Yeah.
I mean, yeah, because if we pass the resolution, it's essentially authorized.
Yeah, we're authorized on you to sign all of this.
You're going to have it.
Get them.
I have my ground plot with that here, Stan.
Can you change my name to X?
Pretty close.
As long as you touched it. You could order a stamp, you know.
I got one.
Okay.
Nineteen thirty-five, discuss and approve hiring, hiring of.
Environmental.
Yeah, that too, health and land use administration.
So the Board, the Board of Health had their meeting last Friday, because this is a two-part process. They did approve the hiring of Andrea Morris based on the hiring committee's recommendation. Of course, you know, we hired, I mean, not hired, we interviewed all applicants that we felt were going to be a great fit. Of course, when making these decisions, they're never easy. And so when we get down to brass tacks, you know, it comes to like, what's each one offer? And we felt that Andrea, you know, she has the technical skills that's needed for the job, as well as the leadership requirement of this job. You know, she handles a budget with a state governed agency, or she works with a budget, excuse me, and she oversees prior to her, I think she, in time, said this on Friday, too, like interim director position, at least twenty-some people. She audits their safety risk assessments within that agency. She quote-unquote called herself the safety comp. So she had to enforce all those assessments as far as, and then do training to other public health departments and agencies across the state. And there were a variety of trainings, not only like, like safety with environmental health hazards, risk assessments, a broad of things. And being locally, you know, to, you know, she'll be closer to home. And we just felt as a group that she met the desires of what we were looking for for this position. And we asked to hire her with a starting salary of ninety-four thousand, which is divided up between both boards as far as budget-wise goes, and then with a anticipated start date of November tenth.
Ron, you sat down on the hiring committee. What qualifications can you tell me upon the land use that we have? Sounds like you've got a lot to do with health.
Correct. I would say like, that portion would probably have to be, you know, learn about our ordinance and whatnot, and procedurally, how to go about that. But with these, does I, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ron. You were asking Ron.
Yeah. And that is true. That is not her area of expertise. She says she is a scientist first. She has her master's degree. In the environmental, she, currently, her position is within a state laboratory. What we were most excited about, or at least I was, is this looks like this would be the real team with Matt's expertise in the land use side and Andrea's expertise in the scientific, the environmental things. This really looks like this could be a good partnership.
I have concerns that she has no experience in wells and septics. I see nothing that we've spoke to about that, which is a lot of liability for the county. Those are parameters that I think needed to be addressed and looked at as far as a resume. I have very grave concerns that we don't have that here. And can you tell me different? That she does have well, septic experience, time of transfer in spirits?
I mean, she deals with a lot of like, the testing materials, and if it's about going out and conducting, like, say, getting samples and stuff, I think I can speak for the group that I don't think we have any concerns with that as far as that goes. Because like, because I know like, a lot of, she's familiar with the testing materials that can send off to the state.
We don't send anything to the state.
They don't send anything to the state. Well.
Why?
It's their, well, it's their testing systems. What I don't know, I don't work in that area, but she's familiar with it. She knows it, so.
I have some concerns. I've been in the business since nineteen eighty-two and worked with Mark and Barb for that entire time. We need someone in case Barb decides to leave, Matt decides to leave, to take over, be able to take over that office from day one. You guys should have been looking at a candidate that had already been under the control of that type of an office. We do not need someone from a laboratory to come in and run our program for us. As being elected here, you three should have been on a hiring committee. The hiring committee should have brought the three candidates to you, and you three should have been the one that hiring, or interviewed them. There should have been one person from the Board of Health. There should have been the HR person there, and you three should have interviewed them. But we need someone that can take control right away. We do not, Matt does not need to train somebody to come in that position. So as a contractor, you guys, I sent a text to Ron asking him to have some members from the construction end, the real estate end, subdivisions, land use, wells, and septic. And I never heard one word from anybody. I didn't hear a word from you, Ron.
Nope.
You didn't. And what did you tell me the other day? The board opted that we did not need any communication from the outside public for a hire. This hire has to do with people's livelihood, health in this county. So when I go into that office and I get one, a well permit, I expect someone with that knowledge to be able, when I present it, that she, or he or she will say, "I will be glad to be out there and will review the site." And they know just as much as I do in chapter forty-nine, chapter sixty-nine in the septic. And when you are not hiring someone with that credentials, you're putting my business at risk for failure for time-wise, getting a job done. So you can go ahead and hire someone, and if they're not up to it, I have the right to ask other counties to come in here and take over this. So you will have to, you will have to get another E twenty-eight agreement with another county to take over this program at our expense. So I don't understand, a hiring committee should have brought you three candidates. We voted for you guys to hire. This is your, half of, this is yours. This isn't from an outside source. You're the one that's overlooking them, especially on the land use side.
Barb, what are you going to do, like, if he wants to drill a well? What's, can you pull me in on steps on that?
First of all, I'm going to look at it. He's going to bring me an application with where he wants to go. I'm going to look at the parameters. What's it all around? Do I have a septic? Where's the boundary lines? What's going on? And I'm going to look at the beacon. What do we got there for soils? What do we got? Then Steve and I are going to talk about it. What are we going to do? You know, what, what do you think in depth, diameter, that type of thing? Then I'm going to go ahead and issue a permit. We're going to do an inspection, and then we're going to do a final inspection. I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot. The liability for the county is great for the program, land use and well, and septic, time of transfer. We have a lot of liability. And you, as well as anybody knows, and all the lawsuits that are going through all the time in Benton County. I can tell you that in forty years that I've been here, we in our office have not been sued because we have done a top-notch program here, top-notch. And I would like to keep it that way.
So I, to say something, so you're expecting your candidate to come in here that doesn't have that experience that Barb and Mark is supposed to train them, or Matt, sorry about that. Or is that what you're?
because we have done a top-notch program here, top-notch. And I would like to keep it that way.
So I, to say something, so you're expecting your candidate to come in here that doesn't have that experience that Barb and Mark is supposed to train them, or Matt, sorry about that. Or is that what you're looking at with this candidate?
I don't know her experience.
Yeah, well, we don't either. That's, that's, that's what you three, the committee should have brought the three candidates to you to make that decision. That's what we voted for you guys to do. I don't know where this ever got into a committee ad. This was your guys' job.
Is this, I mean, as far as, doesn't the, the role of all the things that Mark was talking about that Matt does, don't you have that training somewhere? Do you certify to do that?
Exactly.
So this is not something that Matt could train her on because he's not an instructor. So she would have to go through whatever process that is. To get the proper training certification to do that part of the job. I don't know anything about the outside. If, if, is there any special stuff that she needs for that?
Absolutely.
And that would be probably something like the Board of Health and we had two Board of Health on there and they passed it because to me, that tells me that they feel like she is comfortable for this job. And
My concern is when you came to the office to tell Matt that he did not have the job, that you told him that this was a leadership position?
Yeah, there's a lot of leadership aspects to it that's gotta be considered.
This position is working. You have to work. There's no other way to say it. You have to work in the environmental health part and in the land use part. There's a lot of parameters in that. Doing subdividing, doing legal descriptions, doing floodplain management. It's huge. It's a huge liability for the county.
Matt would still currently have his position in the department?
If he chooses to stay at his position.
So who, who, who's gonna take over if Matt decides to go? Haley, are you gonna be down there? Ron?
Absolutely not.
It does fall back to the supervisors, I hate to tell you that. When someone, the sanitarian, we've run into this before. I've had this, I've had the supervisors come out and approve the well site before. So it does fall back on you guys. In other counties, it has happened.
Where's that goes, I don't know how that works on like legal side as far as that. I haven't had to look it up. But I just feel like that this, the procedures that were chosen to be handled, this is between two boards. It has to be, to be official, it has to be approved by both. And, and I can tell you that we had board members, we, Ron was on there. There's two from the Board of Health, you know, HR was involved. I was as far as for the civil legality part of it as well. And we just felt as a group that this meant the multiple tiers for this role. And we just feel like the big thing is they're gonna make a great team just to take it to levels that we as a group felt like we see the department going. And we were very confident in our choice. She does work in environmental health type of stuff in her current role as far as risk assessment and stuff goes, which I think is important because she understands the stuff that goes on in that area, a special team. And she was questioned upon the technical stuff.
Well, that's good to know.
Yep. Yes, she will need the, the training and the certification, which we were aware of, that she does not have that.
So how long does that take?
That's gonna take a while and it's expensive.
For what we said right now, I mean, and just mentioned that if Matt decides to pursue some other avenue, where we at right now, if he decides to go tomorrow, we don't have anybody to?
And I'm going to retire. I've, I've told you guys that. I'm, I'm gonna be retiring.
But you don't have the certification?
I have.
You have the certification?
I have what I need, yes.
So anybody can change their job at any time. So what would we do in that case? And we'd have to hire someone outside to come in to approve on an as-needed basis. I don't know. I'm just throwing stuff out there. I don't know.
Good question.
It would probably have to be like a possible twenty-eight E agreement. For health and so, so in the midst of this middle.
But as far as land use changes, that's all.
That's, that's
That's us, right?
That's count.
That's, that's so. It, it'd be It just gets down to wells and septic systems is where the biggest concern is.
Time transfers, floodplain management, pumper tank inspections.
Like Derek mentioned, that department is split fifty-fifty between public health and land.
I'm hearing hesitation with the board. So I think the thing for us to do is to postpone or table this hiring today. And I think it, it would be appropriate for this board to then contact the health board and then we see if we can meet with the candidate.
I wonder if it wouldn't be bad for us to also reach out to some other county and say, hey, if we were to contract this service from you, what kind of, what kind of dollar amount are we looking at? Because if, if, it's gonna cost us a whole bunch of money and, and again, I am completely ignorant on the, how this has to go and how, and how much time is involved in doing all these things. And if we have to hire somebody to come in on a twenty-eight E, where are we gonna be at money-wise with that? Who's gonna pay for her training?
Because I've
To be certified.
I've had several conversations with Barb as to not prying into what she is planning on doing, but she wants to leave the department so it can continue forward. That is a priority she has.
I do.
So I would be all for doing some more investigating, see where we can go with it.
And then we're gonna be in a position that, or it sounds like they're gonna hire regardless in the future.
See, I don't know how long it takes to get the not the land use, but the whatever testing or whatever you gotta have for like the wells and septic, you know, whatever batch you gotta take, where do you gotta take it? Can you take it online?
I don't think so. I don't think those are offered online.
They just had it?
Yeah, yeah. It was in Boone, so yeah.
No, you, you wanna, you wanna look at what your, your job description here was, what the requirements were on, right here. So that's what you were supposed to meet.
I would like to meet with the candidate.
I would make that a motion that we table this, we meet with the candidate. In the meantime, we need to do some investigation and find out about these certifications to see where they can be done, if this is an online thing or what takes place.
Right now, we have capable people in the office that are doing this.
Correct.
And our biggest concern is, is if those positions are vacated, we're sitting here holding a big old matzo ball. So that's not different from any other hiring when you hire somebody that has certain qualifications, doesn't have everything, gotta be trained. I mean, there's always that possibility when you hire somebody that you're gonna be caught. And I don't, you know, I don't know how many candidates we did have for it.
How many, how many candidates were there?
We had fourteen apply.
Fourteen of them?
And how many, and you had three at the final?
We had four that we were going to and the one declined because it was out of state. I mean, they were willing from Florida.
Why, why don't you bring in the three and interview them?
Because then you'd have to have the Board of Health do the same. I mean
I mean, we're, we're already down on path where we set forth procedures of doing this. She signed a conditional offer, acceptance upon passing of the boards, both boards and stuff. So if, from a legality standpoint, it'd be starting from scratch essentially.
But is it taking some time for us to meet with her or whoever? Is that gonna get us in, I mean, we? Is this a time constraint thing?
I mean, like I said, to, your start date wouldn't be until November tenth anyway.
Right.
If that makes you feel more comfortable, I'm sure we can help arrange that.
I would just like to find out a little more about the certification process, what it's gonna take.
We can share the apps too that we got with you.
Yeah, because I mean, if this is a two-year course that has to be taken, then what, is it piece mule or how is it done? I don't know.
But as we mentioned too, as a team, we knew that these two would complement one another.
Right.
She maybe is
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
More stronger in the public health side and he is more stronger in the land use.
Yeah, so
I mean, it was, it was a
If that stays as it is, then, you know, we can get this moved forward as time goes on for everybody on set.
Bruce, you could make a phone call up to Buchanan County, up to their zoning and health department up there and discuss it with them, how their procedures are up there in Buchanan County with Amber.
We got a motion on the poll.
One second. Okay, so, so, tip of the eye.
Be my eye.
Bull's eye. I will be in touch with you.
Thank you, Sarah Leanie.
Yep.
And in the meantime, I can scan you all the applicants that were, or the three that we interviewed.
Yeah.
Just for the members, that's confidential information, just, just as a reminder.
Right, right.
The one from Florida, will, will send that?
No, we, we interviewed three. We have one veteran apply as well. Thank you.
Report.
We had the one yesterday. You want to cover that?
You do it.
Uh, we have, we, we met with Kirkwood. They went over their program that is in Benton County with, the emphasis was on their ag program. And then a great deal of it dealt with the things offered through our high schools, through Kirkwood, which the numbers show that it's, I should have brought that folder they gave us. I'll bring it so you guys can see it. Very well attended, utilized, the Kirkwood programs by the, by the high school students getting college credit while they're in high school. Well, as far as to list the grade point average in the area high schools, we're all above a three-point out. So it appears like our students are taking the programs seriously. They've recently had a large addition in their ag program. Part of it is diesel ag, the other is, and then big truck diesel mechanics. They've put on a new, they call it laboratory, a new shop, so there's gonna accommodate more students. There is a, a unique program that is through the Tyse Automotive family where they have one or two evenings a week, where, one evening, where interested high school kids come into the shops, one in Belle Plaine, one in Blairstown, and they get some, some training and some hands-on work with a technician. Joel Tysh reported from a meeting he was recently at that the dealers in Iowa, in the technical side of things, could easily hire a thousand technicians in the state of Iowa.
They also talked about the tax statements too.
Yes.
Which it is confusing to, to residents that don't understand. When you look at how the levies are broken down, like a dollar forty-three goes to Kirkwood out of our total levy. But as a whole, it said forty-four million. That's not all Benton County forty-four million. It's statewide, you know, their jurisdiction.
Service area law.
Yeah, and that's just legislative. We have to put that in there. But even though that's way more than our county's budget, yeah. So they have their finance person there and they were showing the tax statements and breaking it down too, so. Kind of like the state levy, we have the TV we used to have. We would put that as a whole as statewide what their budget was versus their dollar. So that was neat too.
Believe it or not, I'm thinking nineteen seventy-six, when I was a senior in high school, I attended Kirkwood for a production agriculture course that I got college credits for. So this has been going on a long time.
One of the
We give money to the workforce development.
Yeah.
The county does.
One person there was a teacher. Tracy? You have this person in screen?
Logan, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Logan. So I mean, there, there are connections within the community, but I'm very deep.
Last time I went, the place was packed. I assume that it probably
Yeah, we had a ripple.
Yeah.
I think they're doing it twice a year now.
They are twice.
Spring and fall. She didn't have the spring names set. She emailed it out later, next couple of months.
Unless if they had it a little earlier. It's the day.
The, the amount of land that they manage with their agriculture, their parks, and then their farming program. Almost five hundred acres, all very close to the school, so they don't have to travel great distances. It's all right there. They have a big, a new beef setup and a new swine setup.
You got any group?
No, pardon.
I had an EasyCog new meeting Thursday morning. We finally picked a firm that's going to look for a new administrator for EasyCog now, so. Now, there's gonna be all kinds of meetings with this company now to look for somebody to run EasyCog. So since Karen's gonna retire.
I know Central Iowa Juvenile Detention is also looking for the replacement for Tony. I posted that on the board.
That's it. I was supposed to have conservation last night, but I decided to.
And don't forget tomorrow morning, nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
See Valerie? But we saw our meeting today, but.
So are they coming? Motion to adjourn.
Will move. Sir?
Should I say adjourned?
Say aye.
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 I can't, I can't.
Oh, okay.
See, she's.